Welcome to the Monday, August 12, 2024 Venus Regular Council Meeting. It is 6:32. Ms. Green, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Alejandro Galvez.
Present.
Councilmember Place One, Teresa Hoffman.
Present.
Councilmember Place Two, Mayor Protem Tony Bovinich.
Present.
Councilmember Place Three, Cheryl Coiser.
Present.
Councilmember Place Four, Michelle Hamm.
Yes.
Councilmember Place Five, Drew Wilson. Mayor, we have a call.
Ms. Green, if you would, please stand for the vacation by Mr. Holla along with the Pledge of Legions and Pledge of Texas Flag.
But that's still secondary to connect the business of you and to thank you for what you've done for us. Let that always be our number one goal and our standard and our goal is you and your word and our motive is always to honor you. We thank for the council that is here to do that, giving up their time with their family, times things they want to do. Not that they could think of anything better to do than be at a council meeting, but we still thank you for their willingness to be here tonight and serve the people and community. It's your son's name we pray. Amen.
Moving on to Section Two, Announcements for the Mayor. Cell phones will be placed on vibrate, silent only. No conversation or comment from the audience is permitted unless specifically called upon by the mayor, and please remain respectfully quiet. Moving, I don't have any announcements at the moment, so moving on to Section Three, the citizen public comment period. Ms. Green, do we have anything?
No, sir.
Great. Moving on to Section Four, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda have been previously discussed, require little or no deliberation or routine by the council. If discussion is desired, then an item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Otherwise, approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city administrator to implement each item in accordance with staff's recommendation. We have 4.1, approval of the meeting minutes for City Council regular meeting July 22, 2024, and 4.2, authorize the city administrator to execute the engagement letter with Patio, Brown, and Hill LLP for the 2022-2023 Annual Audit. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I second.
Okay. One moment, please. Council, pardon, Mayor Protem Bovinich, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Councilwoman Hoffman, a second. All in favor? Not opposed, motion carries 4-0. Y'all are gonna be a bunch tonight, I can already feel it. Okay, moving on to Section Five, 5.1, Budget Workshop, Discuss the Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start out with a little bit of a preface. I emailed you guys over the weekend after submitting this, and I have to say, my almost 20 years of doing this, this is probably the worst budget I've ever put together. So lucky you guys. Now, I say that to the extent that, to my standards, this is the worst one I think I've ever put together. And I've listed some of those reasons with you guys in terms of most of my budget presentations. It's not just about where we're going for the next year financially, it's about where we've been, where we aren't at, and where we plan to be, right? So, in a nutshell, it was kind of like a windshield cracking. I would get in, delve into the budget with all the numbers. One of the issues we've been having, which we will fix, and I've already talked to our new finance director about this, is how we account for certain things over the course of a year, making sure we're consistent in where we account for things in the budget, we're consistent with how we label things, we're consistent with our documentation and retention, those types of things. And it's no, and just to reiterate, but I sent you the email, there's no really fault of anybody, certainly none of the current staff, but with the turnover, as you guys might imagine, with the turnover in the city administrator's office and the finance director's office, over the last few years, it's been pretty hectic in the administrative side of things. And once I got into the timing of me starting here, as we've discussed, it was about a month to six weeks later than I would normally even start the budget, and it took me a month to even start it when I got here. So just a lot of, a lot of a compressed schedule, like I mentioned, to remind you guys and anybody who's listening or watching, we have a lot of deadlines, right? We have a lot of deadlines the state has set in place that we basically have to work backwards from when it comes to public hearings on the budget and the tax rate, when we have to adopt the budget, the advertisements for the public hearings, you know, when we have those, and those all have to be a certain number of days in between each other, right? I mean, you have to hit these things on the calendar, that's why I sent the calendar out earlier, I don't know, back in, I guess it was late May, to try to hit those dates. Obviously, it's the best plan you have, and now things come up and you have to kind of adjust, but for the purposes of tonight, tonight is really mainly about you guys, us talking about the proposed tax rate, and you guys taking a, I think it's a voice vote, Kelly, on the proposed tax rate, right? That's the main thing, because you have to take that vote so many days prior to the hearings and blah, blah, blah. So that's really the main thing for tonight. The importance of tonight is that vote. Now, so I will say this, there's a lot, even I started going back through this after I submitted it, and I found typos, and I've found, when you're working with multiple screens and multiple spreadsheets, and there's not another pair of eyes on the budget, it can get, you know, you start dreaming numbers eventually, you're in it so deeply. So with that being said, this budget, as I mentioned, is not the final version. It will be definitely cleaned up. Most of the typos and errors that are in this are in historical documentation and historical data. There was just, there's just a lot of different ways that we have accounted for things, and when I tried to put this in a form that I like to submit it in, to get the historical data in the same format, it started taking longer and longer and longer. I would find something, and it would windshield crack one way, and it would cause another, you know, it would cause me to ask another question, and I would delve into that, and it would cause, it was like an ongoing thing, it's like I never could get the end of the rope. It's kind of like an audit, when you start an audit, you start getting these questions asked. So this is really the base operations budget for next year. This does not include any of the substantial new and expanded that, you know, we discussed at the last meeting. As I mentioned in the email, I'm going to need to get with staff after this meeting this evening, get with staff to try to whittle down what if and how much of those things end up in the next version. So I already started cleaning this stuff up today. As a matter of fact, this little letter here, I finished today, this basically tells you everything you need to know about the budget. It's a real brief summary called the city administrator's letter, and it's basically, like I say, it's a good summary of the budget. I like to put together what's also called a budget in brief, and that's all, you know, it's like an abridged version of the budget, you know, maybe five, six pages total, so if anybody, you know, doesn't want to open up an entire, you know, 100-page PDF or whatever it is, they can have that. I'm also still going to make this an interactive PDF, so the public and you guys, whoever wants to do it, when they get online, they pull the PDF, they can click on the table of contents and go directly to those parts of the budget that they're most interested in. That's just time-consuming, tedious work, but I'm still going to get that done. So I'll just briefly, this letter will be in the next version that you guys have, but like I said, I just finished this up today. So we are talking about the proposed annual budget for the fiscal year ending 2025. This budget provides funding for planned expenditures, net contingency operations, appropriations, rather, for all government operating funds totaling 7.8 million and proprietary operating funds totaling 5.1. So the government operating funds, they're basically all those that aren't water and sewer related, water and sewer sanitation, all those things are considered in our proprietary fund. We are using fund balance to balance the budget. That's an important distinction to make. When people start talking about balanced budgets, that's what reserves are there for a reason, right? And we talked about this last time, about the number of days that we have in reserve, especially as it came to the audit, right? We're very healthy when it comes to, usually it's about a quarter to 60 to 90 days, and we're well past that, we're almost double that right now. So we will, fund balance typically is only used for capital or one-time expenditures. You typically don't want to use fund balance for ongoing operating costs. An example of that would be is if you, let's say that the budget, the operating revenues in and of themselves did not provide enough revenue to, I don't want to bring this up, I don't want to put the employees on alert or anything, but let's just say that we want to look at a COLA, right? And the operating budget won't cover that. That's an ongoing operating cost because that goes into the, you know, following years. So we wouldn't use fund balance to fund that COLA. We would use fund balance to fund capital expenditures, one-time purchases, maybe we get revenue that we didn't account for, we get it during the year, we appropriate that for something else. The general fund, I am proposing a property tax decrease of two cents, or around two cents, from 75, 48, 42, down to 73, 80, 59. Our values for 2024, or for our overall taxable property values are expected to decrease over this year is by almost 20%. So what's happening, and it's a very good position for us to be in, is, and I'll get to why that 73 and change is a proposed number, I can kind of skip to it, that is the voter approval rate. So that's the three and a half percent we're allowed to, and more revenue on existing properties that we're allowed to collect. And so when we have fairly significant growth, the idea there is as more taxpayers come on the roll, as more properties come on the roll, you hope, based on policy, depending on what you need to do, you can put downward pressure on the total tax rate for those who have, you know, been here, so the current property owners get less of a burden and it shifts to more of those properties. So as you're growing, everything being equal, you should see downward pressure on your property tax rate, and that's what we're seeing. Now, I will say this, property taxes still make up about 55% of our revenues. That is not out of the norm for a smaller community especially. That is going to quickly change, though, as we continue to grow and as businesses along 67, once 157, that project gets finished, and all these interconnected projects from different counties and cities start, you know, hitting the ground, we're going to start seeing a lot more commercial development. Being in that, we have seen a little bit of a slowdown in our sales tax growth, okay, not our revenues, but growth. So it's like, it's not growing quite as fast as it was, but you have to remember, we were coming out of COVID, everything was, you know, super expensive, and while that's bad for the consumer, right, every, you know, we know how much everything costs at the grocery store lately, that's good news for sales tax receipts, obviously. The other, the other shoe for that to drop, though, is now everything's more expensive, so while we're getting more sales tax receipts, everything that we do for the community is, costs more as well. So it all kind of goes hand in hand. Like I said, property tax revenues for this budget amount to about 55% of our revenues. The M&amp;O side of the tax rate and the debt rate is where, kind of where the change has been. So we, in order to keep our, there's a policy consideration to be made about keeping your tax rate stable. If you have too much growth, right, and your no new revenue rate or your voter approval rate drops too much, you have a, it's, you're kind of setting yourself up to lose in future years, especially the way that they have the rules written now for de minimis cities like us. De minimis cities are under 30,000 in population, and we actually have an extra $500,000 buffer that we can collect. The problem with that is, is it triggers the risk of a rollback election, not an automatic one like cities above 30,000, but a risk of one, and we're, I did not feel like we were in the spot now that we needed to exceed that because of the growth that we've been seeing. So I lowered, the proposed tax rate is to the voter approval rate, which basically keeps us at the three and a half percent and doesn't, we don't risk an election. But the, so we shifted a little bit of the debt, excuse me, the property tax rate from the M&amp;O side, which is where that three and a half percent limitation comes into play, over to the debt service side. So we've rolled some of our 2018 general obligation bonds from the water and sewer side into the debt service, into the debt service fund. So what that happens is you shift a little bit more of that percentage of the tax rate over to the debt service side, so we only lost two cents on our M&amp;O side, going down to the voter approval rate. If we had not done that, we would have lost almost five cents, and that's very difficult to get back if you need it in the future. So it's just a way to manage the debt service, and when ends up happening, that doesn't, the water and sewer fund, because that is for that fund based on those revenues, will transfer money over to the debt service fund to cover that. Now, sales tax, I won't go through the, one of the things about this city administrator's letter is it really does tell you where the numbers come from, how we arrived at the numbers that are being proposed. So it's kind of difficult, you know, obviously, I will, when I, there's a couple of things in here I need to update. Once I get that finished, I'm going to send you guys a copy so you can read this for yourself, because I'm just going to kind of skim through it for this evening. But we have had a, on the property tax side, we, number one, we've had a really good, we've had really good luck, and the tax assessor would not say it's luck, he'd say it's hard work. We've had really good luck with our collection rates, in some years going above 100%, and I can explain how that happens, how anything's above 100% later at a different time, but we've just had a lot of increases. Now, the increase to the revenues that we're seeing, and we'll get to those actual numbers here in a minute, 60% of the extra revenue that we're seeing in the general fund or property tax revenue is coming from new property on the rolls. So that's, I mean, we're looking at, pardon me, this is in your packet, almost, basically $689,000 and more in tax revenue, and of that, 405, 405,000 is new property, so 60% of that is coming from new properties, and that's going to continue, because a lot of, I think a lot of what we have in the revenue lines for our current budget anticipated a lot of that residential, especially the residential construction hitting this year, and it just because that hasn't happened there because of some, a couple of those developments, but we're going to start seeing more and more of this. So it's likely next year that we see an even lower voter approval rate because of the growth that we're experiencing, which is actually a good, I mentioned this to the mayor the other day, whenever you can have, you can still get stuff done because of the growth, but you can also alleviate some tax burden for the taxpayers, that's where kind of good policy makes good politics, right? They have the same root word. So they say it's a really good place to be in. But like I say, 60% of our new revenue is coming from new property, and it's important to recognize this as well. According to the North Texas Council of Governments, from 2020 to this year, our population's increased 61%. So we do have a, we do have some studies on the books that show very exponential growth. We're not there yet, and we're going to probably, going to have to redo those trends because they're way, based on some of the numbers I've seen, we should be like 15,000, 17,000 by now, and that's obviously not happened, but again, that goes back to, I think, the anticipated construction of these new homes, and you think about the residences and the numbers that it creates. Now, when it comes to the construction, everything that's been driving this growth is going to continue. A lot of what we're doing is this straddling fiscal years, more than two fiscal years, and you're going to start seeing these numbers just continue to go. So I'm very fairly confident, at least when it comes to the new construction trend, that it's going to continue into the next year. Getting to sales tax, anybody have any questions on revenue? I want to get through them, I think, so you guys can start asking questions. Okay. Sales tax, you know, between our 1% general sales tax rate and then our property sales tax relief, that's about 15% of our overall revenues, this is about the second largest part of our revenues. Now, we have seen, so between the property taxes and sales tax, that's 70% of our revenue. So the idea of policy and practice is we have that 55 and 15%. Now, you say, well, where's the other 30% go? Well, we get about a little over half a million dollars just from the Johnson County ESD for contracted services. So we have some big amounts that you wouldn't normally think of in terms of revenues, but between the property taxes and sales taxes, that's 70% of our revenue. And when it comes to sales tax, we have, we've had an average increase since 2021 of 8% every year. Now, three years ago, we had about 10 and a half percent, then it dropped to 9.7%, then 3%, now 3% again. So you can see it's kind of slowing. Now, that's the growth rate, that still means we're growing, but in terms of sales tax, it's just not quite as high because some of those downward pressures, right, prices coming down, some of those inflationary causes causing people to not maybe spend as much But we've had a, this average 8% growth, I'm projecting us to end about 12 and a half percent above budgeted revenues this year. So that's another good place to be in, and I think that trend's going to continue. Now, that being said, as we all know, nobody expected COVID, right? Nobody expected Snowmageddon that one year. So sales tax is one of those things that I'm very, very conservative about when it comes to projecting revenues. So I have a conservative 3% going into next year. So that will also affect the EDC's rate, right, because they have a portion of the sales tax. So that 3% growth rate is also in their budget, and we'll get to that here in a little bit. I completely expect us to be higher than that, the 3% growth, given what the last few years have been, and who knows what's going to happen, you know, I don't know about you guys, but I've been hearing, you know, presidential elections have a way of stirring up markets, and it's kind of above my pay grade when you see eggs being three times as much, but the stock market's three times as much as well, so we just never know. So I budget for these very conservatively. One of the interesting things when it comes to the sales tax, it's always interesting to me, and this is the first time I had done this exercise since I've been here to this extent, who are our top sales taxpayers are, right? And at year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date as of July 31, because it's the last numbers that we have, the top 10% of our sales tax contributors pay 52% of the sales tax. The next 11 through 15, 16%, and then 26 to 50, 12%, and the bottom 51, we have, I think, 104, 105 sales tax contributors, the bottom 50-plus is only 20%. So the 10%, we want to stay in their good graces and make sure that they have what they need to continue to be successful. But a quick rundown of those, the top 10, Chisholm Trail Ready Mix is at number one, Amazon.com Services, Marketplace, Sure Guard Lawn and Pest, Liquor Depot Venus, Lone Star Truss and Lumber, Subway, Zephyr Cranes, Amazon Services LLC, Whataburger, and Sabre Power Services. So, you know, you've seen this pretty standardly in most communities, that the Amazon is usually one, two, sometimes three of those top 10 because of online sales. But I was surprised actually to see a couple of these on here, given my time, although it's been short my time here, and, you know, and getting around town and talking to people, I was surprised to see a couple of these on here. So that sales tax, anybody have a question on that brief rundown? Okay, now, I guess the meat of the budget when it comes to expenditures. I always tell people this, revenues can be projected, and if you've done it long enough and you have enough good data and you have a good plan in place, you can pretty much get the revenues pretty dang close to what you end up getting. Sales, or property tax is one of those things that we're going to get really close to what our assessment is, just because of the collection rate, but everything else, it really is just a best guess based on the trends, based on the projects that we have, and based on what we're seeing on the ground. So I always tell people, we don't really budget revenues. We look at the revenues that are projected and then we budget our expenses, our expenditures, right? Because we can't, we can control our expenditures, we really can't control the revenue at the end of the day, for the most part. General fund expenditures, including transfers, which we don't have any this year, I propose that total expenditure is a 6.1 million. This represents a 9% increase compared to projected expenditures for the end of this year. Now, it's important to understand, a 9% increase in expenditures, given where we're at this year, is actually very negligible. A lot of, and we'll see this in a minute, a lot of our line items for this current year are lower than what we budgeted. And so I was in a position to where do I, I think, I personally like to see the percentage changes, to see what, you know, that kind of, they can kind of skew things, you have to be careful in what you're reading, because, you know, if it's, if it goes from 100 to 200, that's 100% increase, but, right, it's the dollars. So percentages can help or hurt you, depending on how much, how you're looking at them. But a 9% increase over what we're projecting now, I had a really difficult time deciding whether I needed to compare the proposed budget to the projected year-end or the proposed budget to the adopted, right? And as you'll see, I complained about this in my email, the formatting, I couldn't get, quite get everything formatted exactly the way across the board that I like. And so you'll see some of that in here, and where you'll see, especially personnel lines, right? So you'll see massive jumps in the projected budget compared to this year, but we had several positions this year that have either been vacant the entire year or a big part of the year, and so those costs are being brought down, so it looks like they're, you know, they're exploding, but you have to keep in mind, or I would ask you to keep in mind, whenever you see that, compare it to the previous, the previous year, which unfortunately right now is a non-audited 2023 year, but that'll give you a better sense when you see that big jump, compare two columns rather than, or three rather than just the two. But the main increase, the main increase for this one is mainly the increased costs associated with planning and development process, and we'll get to that in a little bit, and like civil inspections and engineering costs, and then the M&amp;O debt service that we added because of the fleet replacements that we have in our fleet program. Okay? So not a whole lot. Now, that will probably change after this evening and after I get back with staff and get some more direction from you guys on what of those new and expanded hit, right? So the reasons for that increase are going to change, the percentage may not change all that much, depends on what ends up there. But again, we're balancing our expenditures with our revenues plus the reserves. Debt service, that is simply, the revenues and expenditures should almost match each other every year, because you should only be collecting as much as you need to pay off your debt service, or pay your debt service for the year. You will see sometimes in the revenue line it being a little bit higher because of, certain monies can go into interest-bearing accounts, not a lot of it, but you do get that every now and then, not this one, not this year, but the penalties and interest that you get, sometimes it depends on how they're accounted for, so you may see a little bit more than what you actually should be getting because of that extra, the penalties and delinquent And then the rest of the major operating funds are our special revenue funds, the EDC fund, which, you know, the EDC met here recently and adopted their budget, that's in, that's in the proposal for you guys. As we talked about, they're the only other body within the city that has a budget, and so they meet, and we discussed that, I'm very excited about where that's going, and we're probably going to need to amend that following discussions of our budget meeting, because they want to do even more stuff, and I think everybody's really excited about getting some things happening. But you can, the expenditures or the revenues for the top B is 415,880 with appropriations for special events and park improvements. That's one thing that we did not, at least based on when I did this, when I drafted this, the EDC had set aside about $180,000 for park improvements for this year that we have not touched, and I think that's something between, you know, Kyle and myself, and certainly the EDC board, the parks board, if we ever, you know, if we ever get one, kind of incorporate them. I put that, those monies back in the budget this year, because we fully intend to do some improvements that, have a little bit more, a little bit better of a plan in place and how we're going to do that and when. That'll get, that'll tie back into the capital improvement plan that we'll put together. And then we just have the, you know, court and municipal court technology and security funds, those are very minimal, but we include them because they are they are governmental funds. And then the street maintenance tax fund, again, when we, whenever we make any projections about sales tax, that's going to affect that one as well. And so we have revenues to be projected at low over 225,000 expenditures of 250. So we were able to use this street maintenance tax fund to subsidize the, the street division in the general fund for, to do more repair maintenance on existing streets. And we'll say this, in terms of preparation, to the extent that they could, staff was extremely helpful, even Becky, she's been here all of two weeks, and God bless her, she got sick last week, and I got sick a few weeks ago, and between, between not being able really to track stuff down, and when I would track stuff down, not really being able to decipher it, because there was no consistency, or there's been very little consistency in things. And frankly, the compartmentalization, I think that has occurred in the organization to where certain people, I know most of us call them silos, right, they, they just stay in their silo, and, and I don't mind the help, I just sometimes have a difficult time remembering to ask for it, right? There are a lot of people in my position, maybe even at the director level, that they don't want anybody messing in their sandbox. Well, when you, when you take that mentality, and you put it into the finances and C I P and everything, it becomes, frankly, some of the historical things that I've read, and where we're at now is, I think, the, the result of some of that stuff. But I can say, the staff has been extremely gracious, extremely helpful in the ways they can, and dealing with my moodiness, because when I get, when I get to budget, I'm so OCD about things, and I always want things to be right. So I was even kicking myself, because I said, I think one of the previous meetings, I was like, well, my budget's going to be way better than this budget, and more or less, and now I hear I'm holding this, and I've got a lot of work to do. So please accept my professional apologies for this not being up to my standards. But I did want to get something out to you guys with a few days to go before the meeting, unfortunately, Tony didn't get to see it, to the, the bones and the, the main part of the budget, and getting some more direction there, following that discussion. So that's it. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or go through the numbers as you see fit.
Counsel, questions, comments? Counsel, ma'am?
I think most of the questions that I had, in looking through it, you've addressed, like I, I noticed that the increase on the administration, the 19%, most of that was the, the tax dot moving, moving all, everything down 157 and the engineering, so that was answered.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
I did, one thing I did want to mention, we, I'd have consolidated some quote-unquote departments. So that administration that you're talking about, several years ago, that's usually the, the city administrator, finance, H R, city secretary, were all included in administration, as you might imagine, and that's typically how it's done. At some point, they separated all these individuals into their own departments, so I call them departments of one. And as a matter of fact, we've got divisions in, in street with one, two people in them, you know? So a lot of what we're going to be doing going forward is consolidating and simplifying things. You know, Becky, that's one of her main, her main goals, is reestablishing a chart of accounts, seeing what works, what's inactive, that shouldn't be, and vice versa. So I did a consolidation, and we'll continue to do that. As a matter of fact, when you see the, when you see the updated org chart, it's not going to be different in terms of the departments or divisions that we have, but you will see a difference in the arrangement going forward. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? Mayor Proten, both of you?
Josh, obviously, I hadn't had a chance to go through some of this, but I've been kind of going through it while you were talking. But one of the questions, I guess, I had was, are we going to be able to give the fire department a couple more fire people in this budget? Are we at that stage, or is this preliminary stuff that we're looking at?
There, there are a few things, I think, and, you know, I don't want to tell the chief that Christmas has come early or anything, but that is a little bit, I would say, of the new and expanded requests that we have at this point, that'd be more likely than the others to make it into the budget, precisely because we have offsets for it. So the, the E S D provides what amounts, kind of like a safer grant, you all know what safer grants are, I think, where safer grants typically come from the feds, that, you know, trickle down through the state. Fire departments go in and apply for a certain number of firefighters, a safer grant pays for those firefighters, a certain percentage every year, then usually at the third, fourth, sometimes fifth year, depending on the city, the city absorbs all the costs. So allows you to get more people in, right, and as you're growing, get to the point where you can afford them 100%. So the, so the E S D has something very, it's not quite as good as a safer grant, but it does have some offsets. So that would be out of the new and expanded to speak of tonight, or speak to tonight, I can see that maybe getting into the budget before the other, just because of those revenue offsets. Yes, ma'am?
So when Care Flight comes in, will, will we get more for our fire department? I mean, I know we will get more staff and stuff like that.
Yeah, we're, we're still working on the, we're still working on the, those agreements, because I know we were talking about the, what do we call it, not the rent, but, do you want to get up there? This is why I had the department heads come tonight.
So what's your actual question?
From what I gathered, whenever I went to, obviously, to, you know, when all this changed, ever, did, you know, each city would be getting some more, more help, more stuff like that on Johnson County Dom. But I mean, I know we need stuff here, too.
Yeah, I mean, our E S D funds quite a bit for the cities, for the employees, and our fire department to run. Care Flight coming in, they will be paying a rent.
Yes.
And that'll give us two personnel, there'll be an ambulance at our station with two personnel. So we've got to make sure we have room for them, and the $500 helps kick in on the utilities and the supplies and everything else that they're going to be using while they're at the station.
Yeah, totally. I mean, you know, we've talked, I mean, we understand y'all need, y'all need new building, building in, and stuff for y'all to sleep, and stuff like that. But yeah, I just didn't know how much, you know, I've, I've been to a few of the meetings, of course, with, you know, the new D A coming in, and, you know, so, you know, I'm just seeing how it was working out in our favor.
Talk so far, so far with Care Flight, it looks like they're going to be pitching in about 6,000 a year.
That, yeah, that's what they talk, that's what I heard about six to 10.
And that's mainly supplies and stuff like that, they're used at the station, because utilities aren't going to make a difference where they're 24/7 anyway, so.
Right.
The only big difference is supplies and station, station stuff they use, so.
Yeah, yeah, because I knew, I mean, like I said, I'm, I've been, you know, we've talked plenty, and I've been here forever, I know y'all, y'all still need tons of stuff, more stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you for your.
No problem at all.
Yes, ma'am. Chief, Care Flight, are they going to be stationed there 12 hours a day, 16 hours, 24 hours a day, or?
They'll be 24/7.
24/7.
Good.
Yes.
Excellent. Just wanted to make sure, that was my question.
Yes, sir. And we did pass our A L S audit, so we should be A L S here as soon as we get a letter from the state.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
Okay, great, fantastic. Counsel, let me go.
Tony, I would just add, the, part of the delay in getting this all put together was getting my, I'll say my, our certified values in. I literally did not have the T N T worksheet, the Truth and Taxation worksheet completed, been back from the county until about 5:00 o'clock on Friday. And so, I mean, that's the biggest chunk of our, our general fund revenues. So, and so the reason I, you know, I could say, I don't want to get out ahead, get ahead of myself, but when I saw the increase in the, in the, in the revenue tax, property tax revenues, it opened up a bunch of possibilities to add stuff that we've been needing, as you might imagine. So while I didn't include it beforehand, when I got those numbers, I mean, our revenues, as you'll see, were projected to end just the current property tax at 2.7 million, and I, and based on the numbers, we're going to be getting 3.5. So we've had a 30%, we're going to have a 32% increase in property tax revenues, and I was not expecting that at all. So those types of increases, and as we continue to go on, will allow us to plug more of the stuff in. So yeah, definitely, you'll definitely be seeing some of those things, and especially, like I say, those that have revenue offsets are some of, sometimes the easiest ones.
Even after the Homestead exemption increases from last year, we're still have more property tax coming in with a projected lower tax rate.
That's correct.
And that's what it boils down to.
When we get the numbers from the county, they already account for the Homestead stuff.
I mean, I guess my last question is that I was also hoping at some point, that if we have a little bit left over, or whatever, we could work in some kind of a COLA for the employees, one or 2%. I know that in the past, we've addressed the fire department and the police department, maybe the other employees in the city with something.
Actually, that's a really good segue for something I need to ask you guys about, I wanted to ask you guys about this evening. So Venus is special in a lot of ways, and I mentioned how we account for things. We, this is the first city, and I'm not saying this is the only city, this is the first city I've served in where all the employees were on a step plan. I've, the only other city that I've served in that had a step plan was Watauga, they, and that's because they had civil service, and public safety was on a step plan, and everybody else was, well, they were on a step plan, plus if the council gave a COLA, they also got the COLA. So as you might imagine, that caused a, quite a bit of, because step plans, you, when you, when you're on an official step plan, you earn the raise just by being there another year, right? And essentially, that's what a COLA is. Now, a COLA is going to be, all things being equal, which they aren't, they never are in public finance, but all things being equal, whatever your C P I, your consumer price index was for the last year, you would be able to give a COLA to match that, because, so, you know, if you, if you had a 5% inflationary factor, you would theoretically be able to give a 5% COLA, because otherwise, that same dollar we're paying our folks is less, only, is less, is worth 5% less. So that's what the COLAs are for, is to keep people up with the cost of doing business and living. What's been happening the last few years, when you see 12 and 12%, 10 and 12% increases, there were some cities back in '22 that gave those, but they had lots of growth, and they, they could, you know, they could absorb it. So one of the things I needed to ask about is, I did not include a COLA in this, and frankly, it's, I'm a little bit unsure how we view the step, because, and it's also very difficult, I had Becky and Melissa helping me out, everybody gets their step on their work anniversary date. And so you may have somebody, when it comes to the budget, it makes budgeting very difficult, because if you just imagine, you know, we have, you know, 10, you know, dozens of people, and then, you know, I started in May, right? I don't really count, but let's just say, I'm one of them, I started in May, somebody else starts in November, right? So our, our portion of the fiscal year is going to be different. That person in November will have 10 months of the fiscal year, while I'll only have five. So my entire 3% is going to have to be prorated for the fiscal year to go into the budget. So that makes it very difficult to plan. So the numbers that you'll see in the personnel lines, the best way I, and most efficient way I could come down to it, is just taking what I'm projecting us to be at the end of this year, and adding that 3% from the step, the step plan. Now, that will obviously have a domino effect with the other lines, social security, Medicare, T M R, because those are all percentages based off the wages that we pay. So that is a, the question is, is this, of course, those who have been on the council for, or up until now, has it been the intent that the COLA, or the step plan serves as a, what I would call just a true step plan, or is it, has it been serving as a COLA? Because those are two different things.
I think I might be able to answer to that. It was set up as a step, not a COLA, so that we were competitive in hiring and retaining people. In the past, when we did not have those step plans in place, it was just kind of all over the place. We had people making, that were all essentially almost doing the same job, that were making different amounts of pay. I know that the step plan was put in place to clean all of that up, it was to put into place to give people something to look forward to in committing to being employed with the city of Venus. It was to be competitive, and again, for retention. It's my understanding in talking to people in the past, is that when they were thinking of that, is that we would, from year to year, consider, so for instance, if we were going to apply 2% COLA, we would apply that 2% to every step, so that every employee benefited from that. And it would, again, keep us competitive with the Alvarados, or the Cleburnes, or Mansfields.
Now, if I'm understanding correctly, when you would do a COLA, you wouldn't add it to the step, that would be a separate number that then the step would apply to, right?
I believe so.
So if it's a 3% step, if you gave, if, you know, if it was $100, and you gave a 2% COLA, now it's 102, now when they hit their step, it's 3% of 102, not 3% of 100? Is that, is that my understanding correct?
I don't know if I'm explaining it correctly, but that's my understanding of it. So I may be off on that. Mr. Wilson, when he gets here in a little while, he was on the council when that was enacted, and he could probably better speak to that.
Well, in that vein, one of the, one of the requests, and, you know, I don't want to jump ahead too far, but one of the requests that we have for this year is in administration with other contracted services, and that's so we can do a formal class and comp update this year. Now, with a class and comp update, you mentioned, you mentioned, the way you put it was, we took care of this department, and then we took care of that department, right?
Yeah.
Right, and so you kind of had to piecemeal it, right? And I, I can just say, from experience, and in working with multiple, whenever you have one department getting pay raises and nobody else does, that, it, it causes, causes issues, right? So as you might imagine, so we, an updated class and comp, classification and compensation study, or plan, will kind of tell us where we need to be in terms of comp cities in the market and with our pay, right? So for instance, and we're, we're going to talk about this, one of my departments had a, had a request for across-the-board pay increases, right? And some of the data that we're using that, some of it seems to apply, and some of it kind of doesn't. I not really know, I don't do that for a living, but it's kind of our best guess. H R managers and directors will have, like, they do annual, what we would call surveys, right? They're not formal class and comp studies. For a formal class and comp study, takes a lot of things into account to make sure that those, that you're most comparable with in your area, you're, you're competitive with those people. Now, I will say this, in Watauga, my last city, we did one two years ago, and they had Fort Worth as one of our comp cities. Well, that made no sense at all, you know? And they had another city, Burleson, actually, was one of our comp cities, and that's 45 minutes away, you know? But, so it just kind of depends. And so the methodology on those, on those plans, who's doing the plan, the methodology they use is extremely important, because just like auditors, and just like everybody else, kind of a different style. But you have to, you mentioned doing the same job, and, but people having different pay, right? There's, there's a term called compression. So when you don't have a, a plan in place to address rising costs and being competitive with your neighboring cities and whatnot, you have to adjust it in a way to where, one of the examples is, is like, well, look, if you, if you hire somebody today at, in position, or you hired somebody in position A five years ago, and they, they, you know, agreed to work for this amount per hour, right? Well, now, because it's so difficult getting workers, you're having to up that a dollar to an hour. What do you do with that person that started five years ago, right? Because now they're making more, so that's, that's compression. So you do that long enough, and you have these huge disparities in classifications of people, like pay grades, right? So what a class and comp update will do is make sure that, and it's not just based on title, that's one of the things that's very important, is based on function. So a good example of that is like, if we have an assistant chief, right, and then Mansfield has an assistant chief, I guarantee you, their job duties are not the same. Our assistant chief here would probably be more like a sergeant there, because of the job duties. It's not about rank, it's about the job duties. So we just may call something, or vice versa, and we may just call a position something different than somebody else. So a class and comp study will, they gather job descriptions, they interview people, they really dig down to make sure that you're using, you have all the information you need, so when you start setting compensation levels... when you start setting compensation levels, you're not losing people, you know? And you have a goal, so you guys, if that's something you guys approve, we'll bring it, we'll bring it to you guys, and we'll shoot for like a 75 percentile goal, or 85 percentile goal. And to make sure we're in the higher end of being competitive, because we're not going to be able to outcompete everybody, but we just want to make sure that we're not falling so far behind in doing that. So I do agree, I think the STEP program is a means to keep people moving forward, right? But my concern right now is, the wage levels that we have right now have maybe already fallen behind. Because I know we did the one in Watauga two years ago, and a year later, we were losing people. So we're at a time now where about every two years, you're going to have to redo it. And unfortunately, it's just how it's going to be. But I just needed to know, and I appreciate you asking about the COLA, because that was one of the things I was going to ask you guys about, you know, you have a STEP, separate, and then COLA could be a different, a separate consideration.
One of the things that the council, since I've been on the council, and then talking to members of previous councils in the last couple of years, we know that we're not going to be a Middle Oathian or Mansfield, and start a police officer out at, I think Middle Oathian's starting out at $73,000 right now. And I worked at Middle Oathian. I worked at Middle Oathian during the early 2000s, where I was hired on and had been there four years, and then we hired a new guy on, and he was making $100 or more a month than I was. And it was because they had increased the start pay, but they didn't go back and address the pay for current employees. Now, they end up eventually fixing that later on in the year, but I know that one of the things that this council, recent previous councils have been focused on is keeping us competitive. We don't want to be at the bottom end. We know that we don't have the tax revenue currently to be at the high end, but we need to at least be competitive. Now, I realize that we're not a Mansfield or a Middle Oathian, but that's who we're competing with for people. Mansfield's 10 miles that way, and Middle Oathian's 6 miles that way. So as we move forward as a city, and we go through the next several years, and if projections hold out, hopefully, that the building is going to start again as soon as the financing and interest rates drop. Once that starts happening, the city's going to grow. And to keep up with that growth, we need to be competitive, and we need to be forward-thinking, and then think, well, a year from now, we may need to hire six more police officers because we're going to grow by 3,000 people, or we need to put on, you know, four more fire people because there's going to be more people in the ESD in the areas that we serve. I just want to make sure that we are staying competitive, and that we're keeping up, and that we're not falling behind at some point.
Before council gives anything for the direction, I'm going to recess for 10 minutes.
So Teresa, how'd your year start?
All right, council, returning back to budget discussions. Councilman Wilson has joined us. Good to see you, Drew.
Good to see you, Drew.
Do we have any, sorry, you want a direction from council on, what item again?
Yeah, so I try to get through my spiel, obviously, as fast as possible, trying to break the world record for speaking. But no, I just, if anybody, if you guys wanted to go through, you know, the numbers, if you had specific questions, you know, like Michelle had already kind of identified, something that jumped out at her, anything like, that's like that. Like I mentioned, I did include some things that I already know about, the comp and class update, right? There are a couple of other things in here we've increased a lot on specifically, because we're going to be doing more hopefully this next year, so things like that. But if there's any specific department or line item or category you guys want to discuss, I'm happy to do that, whatever you guys want to do.
Counsel, Mayor Prokhorov.
My last question that I had about the budget was revolving around streets, and what kind of street money we're going to be looking at to be able to hopefully address some street issues.
That was my question, too.
Excellent question. I did mention briefly, as I was speeding through this, the, and the street maintenance tax fund, we're setting aside about $200 and a quarter of a million dollars for street repairs that way. Now, when it comes to new projects, and this is where we'll get into the water tower and all those big issues, that's going to be mainly tied to water and sewer, right? But it's also going to be tied to mapping out the use of our debt, that we have, the bond that we have, mapping that out, the use of that, and when it hits. We've already asked the city engineer to dust off those plans, for the design plans for the water towers, so it is going to be our intent to get that started this next fiscal year, mapping out where the financing is coming from, and then how that relates to, because all these projects, especially when you start talking about water lines, drainage, affects streets, right? So all that's going to be kind of tied together, so it's going to be extremely important on the CIP. That's one of the things that Kyle and I will be working on, I don't know if he knows that or not, but the CIP, and getting that established. And like I mentioned before, once we, you know, Melissa was just talking about how I'm so nervous, I'm really, I'm really nervous and upset because I'm not happy with this budget. I know we'll get there, and this isn't the final version, and when we, you know, when you, you guys adopt it, it'll be, it'll be where it needs to be. But I kind of don't know some of the answers when it comes to the infrastructure right now, because of that tie-in. That's the best.
I think we're just looking for an overall.
But we are setting aside those, the $180,000 in EDC for park, that's going to, it relates for park improvements, the street improvements, Kyle has asked for additional funding for materials and supplies for those specific divisions, because we intend to be doing more that way, too. So a lot more repair on a consistent basis, and then once we get the CIP in place, that'll be, we'll speak to the new projects and that.
Counsel, anything else? Councilman Pam?
I think you, again, you answered more questions. I didn't even have to ask them, I was trying to be nice and not ask them. So I appreciate that. So I'm glad that you and Kyle are going to do a CIP, because I know the one that we have, you said you don't really put much credit to, so that'll give us.
Well, I'll backtrack a little bit. It's a very comprehensive CIP, the one we have, but it's more of a, this is what we think you're going to need in the future. It doesn't tell you how to do it. So when I say CIP, I think when I said that initially, I was talking about something kind of different, which is, here are the projects we're going to do, here's the funding sources, here's the fiscal year, we're going to get it done, you know, does it, are we able to get it done in 12 months coming up, or is it going to overlap two fiscal years? That's what I mean. So yeah, it'll be a lot more, maybe not as comprehensive in terms of pages, but it's going to be more detailed in terms of what and when.
Councilman Kaiser?
When these heavy industrials come in, that should bring a lot more revenue to fix our roads, to fix all this, correct?
Well, ironically, you know, I mentioned who our number one sales tax contributor was, is Ready Mix, and they have, no offense, but they also contribute to the degradation of our streets. So they kind of should be the top pair, you know, right? Tongue-in-cheek, but yeah, it depends on what they are, right? So if you have a, I know this came up when we were talking about the EDC budget the other day, about what kind of businesses we want to try to attract and recruit. You know, when you have, you know, logistic-based, you know, trucking, sometimes industrial, where it's like a warehouse, or... or a fulfillment center or that kind of stuff, that, those projects tend to be less, they don't stress services in terms of public safety and that sort of stuff, but they do stress, as you might, as you might imagine, streets, right? So it kind of depends on what type of industry it is. If it's a lot of heavy truck and heavy equipment, then yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to plan for that. And that'll, that'll, that strategy that, you know, when we, when we start doing the strategic planning and we have that in place, that'll help kind of, help me organize and where we want to, you know, direct things. So if we do have, say, an Amazon fulfillment center come in, you know, we don't, we need to be able to know what it, be prepared to, if that pops up, where do we want to try to put it, right? So it has, it has, you know, maybe it's off of a thoroughfare that doesn't have as much commuter traffic, you know, but, you know, so those types of, those types of things. But yes, once those things hit, because usually it's the, like a data center, right? It's, it's, I call it the personal property inside, right? That's where a lot of your stuff's coming from, your property tax. And they have, those specific types of industries have very little impact on your services. So it ends up being a very good win for most communities, depending on the way you place them in the, in the community. So, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Is there a vote we can make here tonight? No. Okay. No vote. All right, good. All right. Well, with that, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 6.1. Conduct public hearing amendment, sorry, conduct public hearing amending the city of Venus, comprehensive plan from C2 general commercial district to I2 heavy industrial district, 124.1805 acres out of the Radford Berry survey, abstract 26 Johnson County and abstract 42 Ellis County, 1115 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas. Oscar?
Hi, good evening, city council members and, and city staff and the rest of the people that are in attendance tonight. So I'm going to try to do this, not in a very quick manner, but I don't want to like worry and like make you, you know, stay for the whole presentation. I'm going to try to do it quick. So basically, the first three items that you will see, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, are amendments to the comprehensive land use plan. The first one is for the property addressed as 1115 11 County Road 109. Our comprehensive land use plan has that as commercial. So we're trying to, to make amendment, to make it in a comprehensive land use plan, heavy industrial, which is this property, this property right here, on the north side of County Road 109. This is County Road 109, and so this is a property. And then the comprehensive land use plan is this one. As I said, it has it like commercial. The property owner has expressed an interest of making that in a resoning heavy industrial. But before going straight to, try to make this resoning, before planning zoning commission and city council, an amendment had to be done to the comprehensive land use plan. So that's why we are here today, to try to, to make this, as the request is heavy industrial. But before, we need to make the amendment to the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:45 PM. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Name and address to the record, please, sir.
Raymond Jackman, 102 Lone Star Avenue, Venus, Texas. I'm not against it being heavy industrial. The thing that I would like to see the city put in place is, the city of Waukesha Hatchee has a restriction that anything that could be deemed hazardous to public health, health requires an additional special use case to be presented, considering how close those heavy industrial places are to residential areas.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on item 6.1? Public hearing is still, is open. Okay, with no one else wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing at 7:47 PM. Now moving on to discuss, consider amending the city of Venus comprehensive plan from C2 general commercial district to I2 heavy industrial district, 124.1805 acres out of the Radford Berry survey, abstract 26 Johnson County and abstract 42 Ellis County, east, pardon me, 1115 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions.
Councilman Wilson?
So we're just adjusting the comprehensive, I won't make you run, Oscar. We're just adjusting the comprehensive plan and then it goes to P&amp;Z, then P&amp;Z sends it back to council?
Well, no, we already had this item here by planning zoning commission on July 25th. So now they recommended approval, like I put it here. So now it's, it's here at city council to approve or deny what planning zoning recommended for approval.
Can we, Mr. Holler, can we approve this with conditions? Like conditions, I'm going to get into a data center, so we don't get a bomb factory over there? A sulfur plant?
That's what you, yeah, Kathy, Kathy thinks I don't talk loud enough. So we, you wouldn't do it on the comp plan, that's just amend the comp plan to allow the zoning to comport with it. So the zoning, then the question I'm getting, I'm guessing would be when we zone it to heavy industrial?
Yes.
Could we, you can put certain restrictions on it. You can't limit the uses in heavy industrial with the item that we have tonight. If you wanted to bring it back and if the, if the applicant wanted to, there's a couple of different ways to do this, okay? There's a whole, whole can of worms. It's not as simple just doing it tonight. Because it's zoning, there are public hearing requirements, there's all kinds of things that you have to go through. What we've got on the agenda tonight is all the council can consider, okay? They don't have to approve it, all right? If council, usually within, for example, an S U P, special use permit, there are conditions you can attach. You can look at our zoning ordinance, see what the S U P says, and you put certain conditions on there. What we're talking about, if I'm understanding you correctly, isn't just we want them to put safe buildings up there. That man right there, that we keep giving him more and more people to do, apparently want to give the fire department 87,000 people, that's what he's for. He handles those buildings and stuff like that. What we're actually talking about is use of the property. That we won't be able to do tonight as the agenda item is. So, and we might be, it might be a little bit more difficult in this situation, because if we want to go, hey, you know what? We want to make certain uses in, in heavy industrial, we want to make them by special use permit only. Absolutely, yes, we can do that. We have to amend our zoning ordinance, which means we have to have a public hearing in front of it with 10 days notice in the P&amp;Z. Then we have to have 15 days notice before that change to the city council, after we have the final report from the P&amp;Z. So then we can change our ordinance and under heavy industrial, change it and say, look, these certain uses can only be done with an S U P, okay? That will not apply to the applicant tonight. Even if the council decided not to make a decision on the zoning tonight, the restrictions in place under chapter 245, and if you don't believe me, go look at 245.002. It is about a 48,000 page or four definition of what a permit is. So pretty much anything is a permit, okay? They're protected with the regulations that existed at the time they filed the application. So restricting it and saying, hey, these are going to be for heavy industrial. These are the only uses we're going to allow, whether you change the definition of hazard industrial or you say, look, these uses are by right, these uses are only by S U P. Rest assured, we can actually do that, but we can't actually do that for this particular piece of property. So.
That answered it.
And if I may say something else, this is just to amend the comprehensive land use plan. For this property, they're not seeking to resonate. It's just a comp plan use amendment.
Counsel, do you have any further questions, comments?
So if the council decides to not go with the comp plan amendment, then you skip over the zoning because 213 of the local government code requires zoning to be consistent with the comp plan at the time it's, it's passed. So just FYI on that.
All right. Counsel, if no further questions or comments, I'll open the floor for a motion on 6.1.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? None opposed, motion carries five zero.
Now, counsel would like to, this is an FYI, if you would like to direct staff to look into potentially having some, what the decision concerning Ray, looking into certain uses in heavy industrial, being by S U P, you can do that as well, too. I don't think that's the need to sustain.
All right, moving on to item number 6.2, conduct public hearing amending the city of Venus comprehensive plan from R1 single-family residential to district, sorry, to I2 heavy industrial district, 216.971 acres out of the Radford Berry survey, abstract 26 Johnson County and abstract 42 Ellis County, 900 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas, 76084.
Hi, city council members, this is the, the property just out of County Road 109, across the other one that, that was here that we just talked about it. So this is the property, 900 is County Road 109. It's the same process. There's a request by, by the applicant to make an amendment to the comp land use plan because now it is residential and they're seeking to have that heavy industrial. This also was brought in here by the planning zoning commission on July 25th and the planning zoning commission recommending approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions, comments on this item? Okay, with no questions or comments, I'll open the floor for a motion on 6.2.
Make a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct, it's my fault. Open a public hearing at 7:54 PM, it's my mistake, counsel, sorry about that. On this item, 6.2. Thank you, Tony. Public hearing is open for this item. If anyone wishes to speak on this item 6.2, can do so now. Okay, with no one, I don't see anyone wanting to speak at this time, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:55 PM. And now I will, any further questions or comments from council on this item? No? Then I will open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance amended the city of Venus comprehensive plan from R1 single-family residential district to I2 heavy industrial district, 216.971 acres of the Radford Berry survey, abstract 26 Johnson County and abstract 42 Ellis County, Texas, 900 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas, 76084.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay, moving on to item 6.3, conduct public hearing amending the city of Venus comprehensive plan from manufactured home division district to R1 single-family residential district, lots seven and eight, block 10, Venus Land and Improvement Edition, Johnson County, Texas, 701 South Main, Venus, Texas, 76084. Oscar?
Hi, this one, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background because on April 15, 2024, there was two different council members that, you know, that are no longer here. This item was, was heard during that time and council took no action because the comprehensive land use plan had the property, as you can see right here, as manufactured home in the brown color, right here, manufactured home, because that's what it is. But the surrounding block, you can see the rest is single-family in the yellow color, single-family residential. So that, the request is to resonate to R2, a two-family residential district. But we couldn't do that without first amending the comprehensive land use plan. So that's why it is here to request to resound to R1 and then later on you will hear this to resound from R1 to R2. But now we're just taking it by piece. So the first step in the process is to change, amend the comprehensive land use plan to R1.
Thank you, Oscar. I will open the public hearing for this item 6.3 at 7:58 PM, if anyone wishes to speak on this. Okay, with no one coming forward to speak, I will close the public hearing at 7:58 PM. Counsel, do I have any questions? Do we have any questions, comments? Councilman Wilson?
Oscar, if we change this to R1 tonight, but there's a manufactured home still on the property, will that put them in violation of the zoning?
Well, it's, it will be a non-conforming structure. So what it is, is there until it is removed or it is the use. But nobody's living in that house. I think it's been, I don't know if by the building department has deemed the property inhabitable, but there's nobody living there and I don't think it's in conditions for someone to live in the property as it is.
I just want to make sure if we did that, that there's not a final offense, like they weren't going to issue citations, they weren't going to be in violation, they weren't going to receive fines or something for, now that we've changed the zoning and it's got a mobile home on it or manufactured home, that it's out of.
No, and then this is again the comprehensive land use, so it will have to be resoned, but still, the use, I mean, you have the structure there, which we don't, we don't know if it was permitted or not, or how long ago, because back in the day, they were doing things without, you know, getting permits or, you know, notifying the city.
Okay.
Councilman Kaiser?
I have a few questions about this. Obviously, a lot of people in the neighborhood, more than 20% wrote you letters about this. My question is, is if, would there only be, would we only permit one house on this land? Are, are we still going to look for building a duplex on it?
Yes, but this, the first step is to amend the comprehensive land use plan from MHS manufactured home subdivision to R1. Then in the agenda, we have the item from, if you approve this R1, then we will listen to the other item that is the resoning request from R1 to R2. And a separate, separate agenda item.
Okay, I'm just clear, I just need to make that clear because, all right, thank you.
I'll clarify it for you, Cheryl. So we're taking it from mobile, from manufactured home to single-family residential. And then once it's single-family residential, then they can ask for it to be multifamily residential. So from a mobile home on it to, now it has to be.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm totally for a single resident, but.
Yeah, we're having to do it a step at a time, basically.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, no problem.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions, comments? Okay, with no further questions, comments, I will open the floor for a motion on 6.3.
I make the motion to approve an ordinance amending the city of Venus comprehensive plan from manufactured housing division district to R1 single-family residential district, lots seven and eight, block 10, Venus Land and Improvement Edition, Johnson County, Texas, 701 South Main, Venus, Texas, 76084.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries five zero. None opposed, motion carries, 5-0. Okay, moving on to item 6.4, conduct public hearing to amend Chapter 34 zoning ordinance, Article 1, in general, Section 34-3 definitions, by adding definitions for data center.
Okay, so this item is for inclusion of the definition of data center. We don't actually have that in our Appendix B, uses permitted, or we don't have that as a definition. So what we're doing is adding data center definition. So a data center is a structure that houses a large grouping of network computers typically used by business, governments, and organizations, right? So by definition, will be added, and then that's been also modified in Appendix B, table of common uses, so this will look like data center in the heavy industrial and in the light industrial, and it will look like, more like this. Once you see that, we'll be adding data center under light industrial and heavy industrial. So that's where we are in, and this is a tax amendment to the Chapter 34, Section Light Industrial and Heavy Industrial. And, yeah, that's all I have for this one.
Thank you, Oscar. I will open the public hearing for this item 6.4 at 8:03 PM. Anyone wishes to speak on this item, just come forward. All right, with no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing at 8:03 PM. Council, any questions, comments? Okay, with no questions or comments, I will open the floor for a motion on 6.4.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 34 zoning, Article 1, in general, Section 34-3 definitions, by adding definitions for data center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries, 5-0. Moving on to item 6.5, conduct a public hearing regarding a voluntary annexation petition of 216.971 acres out of Radford Berry survey, abstract 26, Johnson County, and abstract 42, Ellis County, Texas, 900 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas, 76084, Annex 2024-0002. Oscar?
Yes, for this, the following item, and I will mention this before I present it, this is an annexation, voluntary annexation, like, there's no involuntary annexation in the state now, so it has to be a request by the property owner or someone approved by the property owner to submit an application, but the applicant has expressed interest in, you know, taking no action on this item. So what we do is hold the public hearing, and we can discuss, and we can ask questions, but we will not take action on this item because this one is linked to a subsequent item and something that we will discuss later. So I'm gonna make the presentation only. So this is the Alta survey, so this is County Road 109, right here, so the property is this, is 216 acres, and this is an overhead electrical power, and this you see here is flood plain. You can see here better the 216, approximately .972 acres for the property. So what basically I did, included an ordinance and a service plan agreement. Mostly, what is composing this ordinance is the meets and bounds, which took a large chunk of the pages, and the other thing that we have is the service plan agreement is how the city is gonna be able to provide services like coal compliance, police, fire, emergency medical services, solid waste services, water service and maintenance. We don't provide water, because that's in the Mountain Peak CCN, but we will be providing, if this is annexed, sanitary sewer, we will have the road annex, we will have, like, street lighting, it will be building inspections by our building department and planning zoning regulations. They will be using parks and recreation facilities if the property is annexed, and then also public own facilities. And basically, that's what I put in there in the, for this item. You can ask questions, but we will not take action. Again, I want to be clear on that.
So I just want to confirm that we'll have a public hearing and questions from council, but with no disconsideration on this item. Okay, I will open the public hearing for item 6.5 at 8:07 PM. Anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, how you doing? With the development group, so we're just asking for a, asking for a continuance on it or a no vote right now?
Your name and address for the record, please.
Nicholas Holbeck, Robber Riner Companies, Development Group for the, for the property, for the subject property.
Do you have an address? It's for the record.
For the site?
Yes, for everyone listening, yes.
Yeah, so it's officially, East County Road 109, Venus, Texas, 216 acre parcel.
Not for the parcel, your address.
Oh, 1029 West E9 Avenue.
Okay, thank you, it's for the city secretary to record. Okay, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so right now, we're working through a separate agreement with you guys as it relates to city services for the site, which is applicable to annexation, and we're just not quite there to do the vote. So we've got the agreement a few days ago. We'd like some time to work through it with you guys before we actually bring this to vote, and we think we'll have all this completed and ironed out by the next session. That's our, that's our goal for you all. Any questions on that?
Not yet, this is a public, we're still on the public hearing portion. Public hearing is still open. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, we know no one else wanting to speak. I'm gonna close public hearing at 8:09 PM. Council, any questions, comments on this item? Okay, with no questions or comments on 6.5, I will move on to 6.6, as we are not taking any action on this item at this time. Moving on to item 6.6, conduct public hearing rezoning from R1, single-family residential to District R2, two-family residential district, lots 7 and 8, Venus Block 10, Venus Land and Improvement Edition, Johnson County, Texas, 701 South Main, Venus, Texas, 76084. Oscar?
Okay, so Ms. Kaiser, this is where we have the request to resound from R1 to R2, a two-single-family residential. It's for this property in the corner of 7th and South Main, right here in the corner. Now that we have the comprehensive land use as amended as single-family residential, this is what is actually in place, this is the house, so nobody's living there, and some people have expressed concerns because we also have, you know, like, sometimes, you know, like, rodents or animals there, so it's not in the best interest of anyone, neither the property owner, neither the city, to be, you know, to have a property vacant like that, so something has to be done with that to, and, so, so that tract is located on the southwest corner, intersection of South Main and West 7. It's approximately with 100 feet of frontage along South Main Street by 140 in depth, so it's about 14,000 square feet. So the applicant is requesting R2 because he wants to build a duplex. Jason zoning is R1 to the south, and R1, single-family district to the west. Also, the property has a manufactured home that is inhabitable, and then that's where the losing, uses our residential in all directions. But across the street, on this side, we have Crown Point Apartments, which are R3, and right here, we have two duplexes, 604 and 604 South Main that are here, but the rest is single-family. And if you have questions, you can let me know. So just some analysis here, the person will need a building permit to do the R2, and this was heard during the Planning and Zoning Commission and also city council meeting, but we didn't take, or council didn't take action because we need to amend the comprehensive land use plan. Yeah.
Thank you, Oscar. I will open the public hearing for this item at 8:11 PM on 6.6. If you wish to speak, please come forward. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Jeffrey Robinson, 3540 J.C. Drive, Midlothian, Texas, 76065. Good evening, council. Nice to see most of you again. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. Mr. Wilson, thank you for your question earlier, though cut out for us, I appreciate it. My wife and I purchased the property earlier this year at 701 South Main, and we want to point out that rezoning to R2 does offer several significant benefits for the community. Benefits of this change have a much broader reach than just our property, and will have a positive impact on the neighborhood and the downtown area as a whole. A number of properties in the vicinity are either vacant or underdeveloped, and this one in particular has been uninhabited, as Oscar said, for a long time. It's been vacant for years. But by rezoning and allowing for a duplex, we make effective use of land that has otherwise remained idle. This move can help stimulate development and breathe new life into the area. Now, duplex provides a valuable alternative to single-family homes catering to a range of residents, including smaller families and individuals seeking affordable housing. This diversity helps meet varied housing needs in this growing community, specifically in the downtown area, where, as of this morning, on the MLS, there are zero homes for rent. Now, the idea that duplex properties will have a negative impact on single-family homes, now, this is not a foregone conclusion, and it's quite possible that the opposite actually happens. A U.S. Census Bureau study found that working communities with multifamily dwellings actually have higher property values than working communities without them. Now, the rundown mobile home on the property now is hampering appreciation. It's holding property values back. New construction here will certainly increase values, not just for this property, but also for neighboring lands. This can attract further investment and be a positive step of development in and around downtown Venus. A healthy and growing downtown is key to building a strong community. Being right near downtown, this is an area that should be enriched and where growth is encouraged because of its proximity to all the amenities and the businesses that the town has to offer. The construction of a duplex will spur economic growth by creating jobs and increasing demand for local materials and services that continue long after construction is complete. Additionally, the new duplex will generate increased property tax revenue, providing essential support for city services and infrastructure. The rezoning is projected to more than double the property's tax bill to the city. Combined with an increase in the property values of the neighborhood, as per the U.S. Census Bureau study, the immediate appreciation of the neighborhood once the existing mobile home is removed, and the additional spending at local stores and restaurants, the boost in revenue can greatly enhance community resources and services. If the rezoning request is denied, unfortunately, the existing mobile home on the property will need to remain in place for the foreseeable future. High mortgage rates currently make new construction of single-family homes for rental properties a less than desirable investment. Rezoning to R2 offers a proactive solution by enabling more productive and valuable use of the property in the near term while bringing additional economic benefits to the local businesses and the city as a whole. There are other R2 and greater density properties right across the street, so the change would be in keeping with the area. Also, rezoning aligns with the long-term urban planning goals by supporting growth. This helps ensure that Venus grows in a sustainable and well-planned manner benefiting the entire community. So in conclusion, rezoning this property to R2 is a strategic decision that will address property issues, provide diverse housing options, improve the appearance of the neighborhood and property values, increase spending at local businesses, leading to a prosperous downtown, and increase tax revenue for both Venus ISD and the City of Venus. I strongly encourage you to support this proposal as a step toward a more vibrant and economically robust Venus. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, with no one else at this time, I will close the public hearing at 8:16 PM. And council, any questions, comments? Okay, Councilman Kaiser?
Um, I have grow, I grew up here my whole life. I know a lot of people around that area. I have pictures of where the land is not even being kept up, the mowing, I mean, the, what would you do to keep it up better if you did build a duplex on it? I mean, I'm looking at it, and it's, it's a mess.
Part of the reason for that is I've been out of town for a month with my mom, who's getting chemo treatment, and while I was gone, our landscaper, who was responsible for taking care of that property, almost went out of business, and I was not notified until I returned, so it was supposed to be mowed recently, and if it's approved, regardless if it's approved or not, that property will be maintained much better than it is currently.
Okay, thank you. 20% of the neighborhood, you know, signed a petition that they didn't even want this. I mean, it's like, where do we stand with our community and what they want, and the great business is coming, our duplex is coming. You know, a single-house family on that land would be perfect idea. A duplex, you know, we have duplexes, we have apartments, we have new apartments coming in. Is this something we really need right on Main Street? That's my concern, as well as, you know, like I said, I've been here a long time. That is brought to my attention. Nothing personal at all, you know, I, you know, it's just stuff that's been brought to me, and it concerns me. Thank you.
Council, any other further questions or comments? Councilwoman Wilson?
Oscar, do you have a petition, or were there letters submitted in approval?
Yes, so I have, like, some writings, letters that went sent to me by property owners. This is from Juana Belinda Garcia. She lives at 702 South Wondood Street. She's in opposition, and she expressed these as the reasons. Also, I have from Latonia Lynch, this, that she's in opposition to the rezoning. I have Mr. Russell here, that they're against, they live against the 701 South Main zoning change. And I have this letter from Peggy Smith, that they have two properties, 700 Wondood Street and 605 Wondood Street, and I also put it here because I know sometimes handwriting is difficult to read, but I have the names here, Belinda Cruz, Latonia Lynch, and Charles Russell, and Peggy Smith. That's what they, they sent me.
So just consensus, all those, the complaints are traffic and maintenance?
Yes, traffic and more density, more like, more cars and keeping off the property.
So I should confirm, more cars, but it's just one extra building?
Yes.
So a house to a duplex. I want, I see that stat, I'm sorry, Drew, go ahead, continue, you could have questions.
That's where I was going, was, you get a single family with eight cars in it.
It's one, so we're taking one house.
I mean, yeah.
We're gonna split it in two.
One house, but you could get eight cars in one house, right? I mean, you build a 2,500 square foot house, you fit just, just as many individuals in the residence, and then, property value, I mean, it's got a dilapidated trailer house on it, so a fire would improve the property value.
You're fine. With respect to traffic and the number of cars, we have strict two-car-only policies, so you wouldn't end up with a situation where you said a single family might have eight cars. That's just not gonna happen with us.
No, 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 I was saying a single-family resident, yeah.
I would agree with you, yeah. Pardon me for interrupting you.
Anything else, Andrew?
Was there anything post-April, after it was heard, was there any other complaints? Nobody's contacted me?
No.
No other, no other contacts, no other?
No.
Do you want us to speak on this? No? Public, well, public comments were closed. I closed public comments earlier, I believe. We're in discussion and consideration now. I opened public comments at 11:00. Is that correct, Miss Green? Okay, I closed at 8:16. I'm sorry. Anything else? Okay, my question is this, why does staff recommend denial?
I recommend a denial because it's considered spot zoning.
Okay, now, explain me what spot zoning is.
It's according to the American Planning Association, is when you have one property that is starting in uniformity or homogeneous with the rest of the block. In that case, we have, like, here, this is a property, the rest of the block is R1, and if you put something that is like commercial, R2 or R3 doesn't go in alignment with the rest of the block.
So, but, just to confirm, in the upper right-hand corner there, there is a duplex there?
Yes, here and actually here.
And then we have apartments right here.
Yes. But that's on, that's not in the same block, that's a different, you have the street here separating the, you.
Okay. Okay, I have been updated by Mr. Hala. Shelley, you can speak since you're representing P&amp;Z. Thank you for the correction. So, make sure we do it right, so that's fine. Sorry, Shelley, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, at the date of our April P&amp;Z meeting, we never saw those letters from the residents. So, that factored into our, you know, and no residents came to speak in our meeting or anything. So, that was what I wanted y'all to know.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley, appreciate it. Okay, um, so, so I confirm, we're saying to deny this because this is spot zoning. And we got duplexes catty-corner across the street, and we've got an apartment complex right there.
Yes, but my, that's my staff recommendation, but I don't make the decision. That's up to city council.
And neither do I. So, I don't either. All right, so, counsel, do we have any further questions or comments on this? Okay, before we go to vote, I will say that I do not believe this is spot zoning. I disagree with staff's recommendation to deny this. However, it is not up to me, it is up to the five of y'all. I will open the floor for a motion on 6.6.
Make a motion for approval. To recognize from R1, single-family residential district to R2, two-family residential district Lot 7 and 8, Block 10, Venus Land Improvement, addition, Johnson County, Texas, 701 South Main Street, Venus, Texas, 76084.
Okay, with a motion to approve, is on the floor, do I have a second? Councilwoman Ham, you have to wait until we have a motion on the floor. Yeah. Okay, with no second, the motion will not carry, will die. Okay, Councilwoman Ham, you may ask a question?
Um, to the property owner, just out of curiosity, if, if this is approved, if you do get the R2 zoning, how quickly would you start work and get the?
We would start working with the board right away.
Right away is when?
This week, as far as getting plans ready, the set of meetings, and whatever the process might be that we can follow it again.
So, you'd have to go through some zoning and what have you?
There are additional construction board meetings.
So, it's still, it's still weeks and months away. So, no matter what it is, we're stuck with a mobile home there for a while.
Yeah, you just have to get to, so he's asking it, he's?
He's asking for the zoning to be changed from single-family to multifamily so that he could start the process of submitting blueprints and declaring of the property and?
And how long is that? How long, how long would that be? When would I see sticks on the ground?
Well, part of that depends on getting meetings with the appropriate city groups that we need to for pre-construction meetings and everything that the process needs to follow.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Wilson's motion did not go through. Do I have, open the floor for another motion?
I make a motion to deny an ordinance rezoning R1, single-family district, R2, two-family residential district, Lots 7 and 8, Block 10, Venus Land Improvement, in addition, Johnson County, Texas, 701 South Main Street, Venus, Texas, 76084.
Do I have a second?
A second, a second, third.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed, at this time, all in favor of this, to deny? Okay, so I have three, all opposed. Councilwoman Ham and Councilwoman Wilson opposing, motion carries three to two, to deny. Moving on to item 6.7, conduct public hearing, rezoning from Ag Agricultural District to I-1 Heavy Industrial District, 217.971 acres out of the Radford Berry survey, abstract 26, Johnson County, and abstract 42, Ellis County, Texas, 900 East County Road 109, Venus, Texas, 76084. Oscar?
Okay, so this is the 900 East County Road 109 item. We are now, again, taking action on this. We just wanna do the public hearing and answer questions or any, anything that you have as a comment. It's for the property against Saddle County Road 109. So, one of the items that we had before that we didn't take action on was the annexation, voluntary annexation. So, the process is annexation and then rezoning, but we didn't do the annexation, so we cannot do the rezoning. So, that's why also we are just commenting and, and on this property. So, actually, it's not property, not within city limits as of today. The request is to have heavy industrial, I-2, for the, for the property. And they're planning to do like a data center and with four buildings in different, you know, they could complete one building, then next year we'll do another building, next year another building, and this right here is the electric substation that will be servicing the buildings. And we also have a development agreement on discussion later on. So, this is the compressor land use plan now that we also amended to heavy industrial. So, but again, it's not going to be, you know, asking for you to take action on the item.
Thank you, Oscar. Okay, I'll open the public hearing to item 6.7 at 8:30 PM. Anyone wish to speak on item 6.7, sir? Name and address for the record, please.
Nick Holbeck, 1029 West Enon Avenue. So, this is the same development that'll follow after the annexation. We're still, we've been working with Oscar and team since February. We're close to having a few irons, a few items ironed out, so we wanna make sure we're completely prepared. Whenever that comes, our goal is to be on the next MNC council to go in for annexation, and then subsequently, this zoning process as well for the intention of the data center development.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing for item 6.7? Okay, with no one else wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing at 8:31 PM. And counsel, we are discussing only, no consideration, there's no action taken on this item. Counsel, any questions, comments? Councilman Bogdanic?
So, I just have one quick question on this, and it may be a legal question for Mr. Hala or Mr. Jones, you may be able to answer to this. So, one of our residents brought up a valid point that I don't think anybody's ever thought of, so, in going forward with, with this particular piece of property, and we zone it heavy industrial, and then their deal falls through, a data center's not gonna get built there, the land gets sold to somebody else, but now it's owned heavy industrial. Is there any way that we could put, I think the, the consensus of the council is we would like to see a, a data center there and support it. I don't, I'm not saying that I speak for everybody, but I think that's the consensus. But if that fell through, and that wasn't gonna be a data center, we wouldn't want, as Mr. Wilson pointed out earlier, bomb factory there, or a fertilizer plant, or a car-crushing facility, because it's now zoned as heavy industrial. So, I guess my question is, is, is there room in that to have that caveat that we would approve the zoning to heavy industrial for this specific tract for the intended use, which in this case is a proposed data center?
May I, okay, may I say something? Or, you wanna speak first? I was gonna say that that's what we are working on, a development agreement, so we will have things in place for the data center, so it will be tied, the development agreement to, to the property.
I will say in general, though, your instinct is correct. So, then, that's always going to be a trick, not a trick, but that's always gonna be the trick when it comes to rezoning, is when you don't have a developer that, you know, maybe it does fall through, right? Any uses in the use table allowed in heavy industrial will then be allowed. So, it would be a matter of, like, in this case, it's, you're wanting it heavy industrial, but with the development agreement, it's kind of a way to make sure that's all it is. But essentially, when it came, when it comes down to it, if it did fall through, anybody could come in and purchase that property, and then whatever uses on the list, they could do it. Because if you're changing it, then you're opening yourself up to, I think, legal action.
And, and then, in the map earlier, we've got an actual subdivision scheduled to go in there with single-family homes right next to that property. So, that's my concern, and some of the community's concern, but I, I think that sounds like that will be addressed, and thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor? So, just very briefly, this is a little, I guess, precursor into what we'll talk about tonight, an executive session on development agreement, but something I just say out here and is probably good for everybody to hear. So, the way that it works, and the way that it was designed to work, is property that's in the ETJ that's considering being annexed into the city, you know, we can only annex property that asks us to now, okay, as of several years ago, because the state hates cities and thinks they can do it better, that's why we're here. So, what we have to do now is under 212-172, those are development agreements, and they're specifically, specifically state for property in the ETJ. It is against the law for general law cities to develop an agreement inside the city limits. You cannot do it. I'd rather have Charmin, but if you're in a pinch, you can use any development agreement for people inside the city limits, okay? Can't do it outside the city limits. Somebody has, I mean, the ETJ, somebody has to come into the ETJ. So, you're authorized. Now, under that section, under the subsection B3 and B8, they allow you, because normally everybody's like, well, hey, wait, what are we talking about land use? Because we don't have that in the ETJ. I'm glad to see everybody learned something in Austin or Round Rock when they went to the, to the seminar, because in general, you're right. Remember, as a general law city, we can't do anything unless the state specifically authorizes us to. Well, under B3 and B8, they've specifically authorized us to agree to land use regulations limited, but it does allow us to agree to land use regulations in the ETJ. Typically, generally, normally, that's done with that development agreement. Development agreement then comes before council that's approved. That is basically your blueprint for what always comes after. I've never seen it any other way, maybe it has, but my time, I've never seen it any other way. You have, at the next subsequent meeting, or some subsequent meeting, you will then have the petition for annexation and the ordinance to annex the property. Immediately after that, you will have an ordinance for land development. I know you're all thinking, and I just went ahead and said it. It's always gonna be a planned development, because that's a unique tailoring for a specific piece of property, which the law allows us to do. So, it's development agreement, annexation, planned development. So, that's where, so, in answer to some of what you're talking about, these questions, we can agree to certain land use regulations, and we're bound by contract with them, okay? It's not contract zoning, which I know you're also thinking that, I'm so glad you learned something from the seminar. It's not contract zoning, because we're specifically authorized by state law to agree to certain land use regulations in the development agreement. So, you have the development agreement, then annexation, now the PD, which is based upon that development agreement. That's what you use as your springboard, as your blueprint, however you wanna define it. That's what you're using to create the PD. Now, it's gonna have a lot more detail in it, a lot more specificity, and it's gonna have all the other, you know, all the bells and whistles that are not permitted in 212-172, B3, and B8, because now we're authorized to do that. You're only limited authorization on the development agreement, now it's the full and complete package. So, hopefully, did I answer your question about, like, regulations and then, okay?
Then, I'll speak to the heavy industrial. I know it's, it's come up a few times, and even through P&amp;Z. So, originally, when it came in, you guys didn't have an amendment that specifically stated data center infrastructure, or, excuse me, data center, and then the definition behind it. So, early on, when we're looking at the site, and our clients are highly sensitive to being able to come in and do what, as, as you will if you want. So, like, SUPs and CUPs usually scare them away because there's variance in site plans. They like to be able to change the way they build their different phases, and that makes life for them easier when they get into these blanket zonings. Now, heavy industrial is one after because it lists specifically the heavy infrastructure that goes in, specifically electrical, so it gives them that comfort factor, knowing that that's covered in the heavy industrial classification. I hear everything you guys are saying. I don't think bomb factory's in there, but, but cattle plant is in there, is what I keep hearing. Obviously, I can't speak to that, because you're right. If you do approve that zoning, someone behind us, if we don't close on the land, yes, that's, that, that is what it is. But there is obviously a give and take, wherever we can go back to our client, because our goal is to get through these processes, the annexation and the subsequent zoning with the text amendment, to be able to show them, hey, we've worked with Venus, we've got all the boxes checked, now it's time to bring you guys to the table and actually get to the planning stage of this. And then hearing everything from the budget standpoint, you know, I hear your, your concern with residents, but, you know, Josh did mention a great point there. You know, it's, it's busy at the beginning when we're building these buildings, right? So, you're gonna have heavy construction, so you're gonna have cranes, things of that nature. You can look at the Google data plant going on right now. It's very, very quiet, it's very, very neat. Once they get those ball, once they get those tilt walls up, they box it in, and then they're doing all that work inside, inside the building. So, after those buildings are built, you know, you're looking at a very, very, very low impact to your surrounding service areas from, from a car footprint, high-paying jobs, and then every time you open up your iPhone and you pull up a picture of your daughter, granddaughter, or wife, it's being loaded from these type of buildings across the United States. So.
Counsel, any further questions or comments?
Mayor, if it helps, I did look in our, in our zoning ordinance, and under heavy industrial, didn't see anything in there that'll, because you can only do what's specifically listed as used. I did not see bomb factory there. Now, there's a, there is a SUP for near Councilmember Wilson's house, but I just, I just wanted to rest, make the count to rest, for sure.
All right, counsel, if no other further questions or comments, I will, we are not taking any action on this item. No action. All right, moving on to section seven, 7.1, discuss and consider appointing a qualified individual to place one on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilwoman Hoffman?
I make a motion to appoint Billy Flower to place one on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, Councilman Wilson? Okay, all in favor? None opposed, motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item 7.2, discuss, consider setting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 property tax rate in scheduled public hearing. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuation of our budget talk, so this evening, you guys will be setting a ceiling for the tax rate. So, once you guys adopt a proposed tax rate, we can't go higher than that with the ultimate tax rate adoption, can go lower than that. But a proposed tax rate just sets the ceiling for our discussions going forward. And then the follow-up item after this is just to call for that public hearing about the tax rate, or the budget, rather.
Mr. Mayor? One quick thing, whatever, whatever the council wants to put in the blank on the motion, just add, I make a motion to propose FY 2024, 2025 property tax rate not to exceed, because that way we've because that way we've got a cap. So everybody will know that no matter what it's going to be set at, it will not go any higher than, so just add that little prepositional phrase, not to exceed.
Counsel, open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to propose fiscal year 2024, 2025 property tax rate not to exceed 0.738059 cents per hundred in value, I think is how that's worded.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Do I have a second?
I second.
He's got to finish saying the rest of it.
Just a moment. One moment, please. Counsel, just asking you to repeat the, your proposal.
You got, you got to read the second part.
I'm sorry. And to schedule a public hearing regarding property tax rate on September 9, 2024. Do I need to read the whole thing again? Callie?
Okay. With that motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor? None opposed? No, none opposed. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item 7.3, discuss, consider calling a public hearing on September 9, 2024 for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget. Ms. Jones?
Yes, and this is Texas two-step when it comes to property tax proposals. So we've, we just set the public hearing for the tax rate on September 9. So this will be a public hearing on the actual budget for the same evening.
Okay. I'd like to open the floor for a motion on 7.3.
I make a motion to approve calling a public hearing on September 9, 2024 for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 proposed budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to 7.4, discuss, consider resolution amending authorized representatives with text pool. Ms. Wilkins?
Okay, it's on. This is just a light housekeeping item, counsel. When I was looking at all of the things that a finance director usually does, I wasn't on a couple of things and Josh wasn't on a couple of things. And so it just makes it easier to transact business. And so this is simply, right now, the mayor is the only authorized representative. So this will remove a former employee and then put myself and Josh on there to be able to transact business through text pool, which is where we have some additional investments.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Sir? Yes. Okay, with that, I'd like to open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve a resolution amending the authorized users with text pool.
I second.
No? Okay. All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item 7.5, discuss, consider amending the court of orders in chapter 12, environment article two, junk vehicles by repealing same as entirety and replacing with a new chapter 12, environment article two, junk or abandoned vehicles. Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. So this ordinance update basically takes what was just a junk vehicle ordinance and mirrors state language in their law to include abandoned vehicles. And Mr. Hall may, may be the expert on this, but I believe that these were basically bound to what the state allows us to do in this one. So that's why these, these laws mirror each other. So the ordinance that we currently have didn't have anything about abandoned vehicles. So we just updated it to include that language and cleaned up anything in the junk vehicle that was old.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments for Chief? Councilperson Wilson? No? Oh, I saw the light come on. Okay. All right, if no questions or comments, I will open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter 12 to environment article two, junk or abandoned vehicles.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to section eight, in accordance with Texas government code, section 51.071, the city council recesses an executive session, closed meeting, and discussed the following. 8.1, discuss development agreement with Logistics Land Investments LLC, generally located in 900 East Canora 109, the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Venus. And 8.2, discuss the organizational chart for city staff and the corresponding roles, duties and responsibilities that relate to type A general law municipalities. We will recess an executive session at 8:47 PM.
Council is there any action to be taken as a result of executive session?